So council acknowledges that we are meeting on treaty seven territory, the ancestral and traditional territory of the Blackfoot Confederacy. Kanai, Bacani, six, 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 Sika, as well as Tzu, Tina's First Nation and Stony Dakota First Nation. Our recognition of this land is an important step in our continued commitment to reconciliation with our indigenous peoples. So we'll just move into the agenda. Is there any additions or deletions? Okay, can I please have someone please make a motion to adopt the agenda? I'll make that motion. Okay, thank you, Councilor Miss Harris. All in favor? And then we'll just review the minutes three point one of the last regular council meeting. Anyone sees any errors in there? If not, I will have someone, please.
I'll move the minutes.
To adopt. Thank you, Councilor Bates. And then we'll review three point two agenda and priorities, meeting minutes from February seventh. Oh, I'm sorry, all in favor. Sorry. Supposed to move through. So the E and P minutes, if everybody's okay with that, I'll have someone make a motion, please.
Mayor Berkeley also moved.
Thank you, Councilor Dunham. All in favor? Thank you. So we'll move into four point one, the C A O report from C E O Becker.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. The report is there for your reference, your view. One item I'd like to bring to your attention is council's discussion and direction from the agendas and priorities meeting of last Monday. Just regarding indigenous land acknowledgements, where there was a motion to recommend to regular council. That council provides indigenous land acknowledgement for all regular council meetings. And agenda, agenda and priorities committee meetings on the days and times outlined in your procedure by law. So just looking for councils deliberation and formal direction on that. That item. Again, there's other items on the, on the report for your consideration. It'd certainly be happy to take any questions. If there's something that pops out of the council.
Okay, thank you, C E O Becker. Does anyone have any questions, Councilor Harrison?
More of a comment in the existing, thank you, Mayor Berkeley, in the existing. Land acknowledgement, we don't have acknowledgement of the Mating Nation Region Three. And I would like to suggest that we add the following words, this area is also home. To the Mating Nation of Alberta Region Three. And they could be added right after Stony Dakota First Nations stop. This area is also the home. And that way they are recognized as indigenous, the Maiti. So it recognizes the whole, the whole group. That would be my, my suggestion.
Anyone else have any comments? Councilor Highstone?
I'm just gonna make, recommend the motion. If that's all right. So I'll recommend that council provide indigenous land acknowledgement for all regular council meetings. And agenda and priorities meetings, committee meetings on the days and times outlined in council's procedure by law.
Okay, any more discussion? All in favor? Thank you.
Mayor Berkeley, just for clarification, now, Councilor High, uh. That was not added into the motion, just for clarity.
Okay, sorry, Councilor Highstone, do you want to just amend your motion, please, to with the additional? Portion that Councilor Harrison mentioned?
Yeah, I'll, I'll wing it. Okay, is that okay? So I think you have the wording, so. Yeah, you, you can jump in there.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Highstone. I would like to see added after the Stony and Dakota First Nation. Stop. This area, the following words, this area is also the home. Of the First Nations, I mean, the Maiti Nation of Alberta Region Three. And then our recognition of this land is an important step, so. Yeah, if that's.
Yeah, no, that's, that sounds good. I think it's just the wording. Our intent is just to have the recommended motion itself. And then the wording is adapted to what Councilor Harrison had provided. Thanks.
Okay, now, C E O Becker. I'll just ask for a vote then on the amended motion. All in favor? Thank you. And then if there's no further questions for C E O Becker in his report, I'll ask for a motion that we approve his report.
I so moved, Mayor Berkeley.
Okay, thank you. All in favor? Okay, and we will move on to the Emergency Coordination Center verbal update from C E O Becker.
Thanks, Mayor Berkeley. In light of the premier's announcement last week, the town has adjusted recreation and culture facilities by removing the R E P. Requirements, which is, we know that this is considered step one. Just to highlight what's coming, potentially coming next, step two. Whereas the government is stating that Albertans will enter step two on March first if hospitalizations are trending downwards. What that, what this means at that time, if this is were to occur, any remaining school requirements would be removed. Youth screening activities for entertainment and sports activities removed. Capacity and all large venues and entertainment venues lifted. Indoor and outdoor social gatherings, limits lifted, mandatory work from home requirements lifted. Indoor masking no longer required. Following that would be step three and, and. What that outlines is depends on hospitalization rates as well. Covid specific continued care measures removed, the mandatory isolation removed. So again, it's all dependent on hospitalizations.
Right, thank you. Anyone have any questions about that, Councilor Bates?
Yeah, just have one, I think back as we. Got deeper into Covid, the one, the only thing I can remember that we actually. Looked at specific was mandatory masks in town facilities. So would it go out at the same time?
Remember, actually, Councilor Bates, actually, we looked at the policy the council adopted. Gee, I can't remember the date exactly. But it's to do with this administration building. Everything else is applied by the government's restrictions. We pulled that policy likely to come to you at the last meeting of February. Just watching the trends and watching the government and projecting that it's going to be lifted March first. We anticipate it's going to be lifted. We'll bring that policy back to you at that last regular council meeting for, for review and direction.
Okay, that's good. Thank you, because I. You hear things like people say what this council is likely to do with, like, we didn't do anything except this building and, and so, good, thank you.
Anyone else have any comments or? I think we've followed the chief medical officer and the government of Alberta all along, so we will continue to do that. Yeah, I'll have someone please make a motion to accept the V C C report.
Mayor Berkeley, I would make that motion to accept the E C C report.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Wing. All in favor? Okay, so moving on to four point three, we have an R F D for the Municipal Sustainability Initiative Memorandum of Understanding.
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley. Just, just recently, the. He saw, you see in the report, there's an emails provided to administration, if not to Mayor Berkeley. Indicating that the government of Alberta is looking for an extension of the current Municipal Sustainability Initiative. Which is really the primary funding source for capital projects. And as you can see in the report, a little bit of history of when M S I started. And there were some amendments, agreements up till even today. So Alberta municipalities are looking forward to a local government fiscal framework, which is, we have not seen any details to that program. But until then, the government of Alberta is looking for municipalities to endorse the, the attached M O U. Which extends the M S I funding until March thirty first, twenty of twenty twenty four. So with that, kind of giving an indication of some of the. Some of the funding the town has received over the recent years, on average. The numbers kind of fluctuate because there was top ups. You know, in advance, it's just created some confusion. And then there's, I know with Covid as well. So but on, on average, we receive one point two-ish million dollars for, from M S I. So just to formalize, M O U, just looking for council direction as per the recommended motion.
Thank you, C E O Becker. Does anyone have any questions about M S I? We did get a top up last year. And we're told at the time that we would see a reduction this year because of it, so payment in advance. There was move to, the idea has been that move will go to funding will be tied to the province's growth rate. And that was going to be a hundred percent growth rate, and then it got cut back to fifty percent. But still not going to be in place by the looks of it for a couple of years, so. This is where we were at. So if there's no questions, I would have someone make a motion then.
I'll move that we authorize the mayor and C E O to endorse the. M S I of amending memorandum of agreement, which extends the M S I program for two years until March thirty first, twenty twenty four.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Bates. All in favor? Carrie? And then we'll go on to four point four in the council resolution action control.
By me, Mayor Berkeley, just the very first one, we marked it red. We know that work has not been complete, but it is in action. We just marked that as, it's in process. If you're comfortable with this market red, we'll continue on with the work we're doing, but. I just want to highlight that. If you have any problem with that, just let me know. We can reestablish that, but that's kind of the intent there. That would be the same. Sure, and page two with Hazelwood housing action item. So we are continuing to work on that process, that process. And we'll be bringing that information forward to you in due time.
Okay, thank you. Have someone please make a motion that we accept this information?
I can certainly make the motion, but before we make that motion, I'd like to, a couple of questions, one through Mayor Berkeley, through to Director Jenkins. Have we heard anything back on our grant that we've submitted for Phase One of the Dodds Lake project?
No, we have not, and I don't believe any announcements have been made through that program, as far as I understand.
Okay, thank you, Director Jenkins, and through to Director Kennedy. Do you have an anticipated start date for the heliport?
We don't have a start date yet. We've just finalized all of the agreements. We'll be moving forward here in the next couple of months to get a concrete schedule from the contract.
Okay, yep. Have we started on the manual?
We have not.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, could I have somebody please make a motion that we accept this report?
I would so move, Mayor Berkeley, that we accept the C A O's report.
Council Action Control Report. Council Action Control Report.
Oh, pardon me, the Council Action Control Report.
No, that's fine. Thank you, Councilor Harrison. All in favor? Carrie, thank you. And we'll move into five point one, request for decision from Director Kennedy and Solid Waste Update.
Thanks, Mayor Berkeley. So yeah, in front, provided a quick update in regards to last year's solid waste. So in twenty nineteen, we did change order to a mostly automated system. And then this year, we did extend the contract to that service provider, Environmental Three Sixty. For an additional two years, which will expire in twenty twenty four. The following that provided in the package is just a summary of some goals and statistics of our waste, solid waste program. Do you have that, Carol? Yeah, there's the next slide. So strategic priority was set when the program was put in place. With the goals to reduce the waste generated in the community through diversion, education and innovation. As well as reducing organizational costs associated with waste collection and disposal. Twenty twenty one, the program consisted of three streams of collection, collected weekly. Collections occurred from Monday to Wednesday, organic collections shifts to biweekly from November to May of each year. Free recycling and yard waste drop off is continuing at the waste transfer station for residential residents of Inisville. As well, in twenty twenty one, we did expand a few things. We expanded the electronics program collection, antifreeze collection. Cooking oil, glass and paint at the waste transfer site. Some of the goals that we, just that we, the quick review of is in regards to the education. Twenty eight targeted messages were posted in regards to the solid waste reduction program. Either on the town website, utility inserts, Facebook and Instagram. We did the annual community green and clean kick it to the curb event. We did the waste reduction weekends in October. As well, we had the third year of the green cart usage survey, so that is a quarterly survey that we do. In-house on four hundred homes, just random homes throughout. To look at the cart usage in regards to the organic cart, the green carts. The results for twenty twenty one showed that in the winter months, it's twenty four percent of the carts are used. And in the summer months, forty seven percent of the carts are used. As well, in the regards to glass recycling, currently municipal class recycling options are very limited and costly. In twenty twenty one, we haul two tons of glass to the Bull Valley Waste Management Commission by Canmore. So how are we doing in regards to inquiries and complaints? You can see a significant amount of, of. Questions were brought up in twenty nineteen in regards to the transformation of the program. But since then, we've, we've done very well in regards to the inquiries and complaints in regards to our solid waste program, reducing it significantly. So in twenty twenty one, the residential organics dropped about eleven percent from twenty twenty. And then the next slide, in regards to the organic carts. Again, based on the survey that we did, we wanted to provide counsel, which is a kind of a summary of how does that look in regards to cart usage? And how full is that cart? This is on average, based on the average. So how far the carts in the winter, about based on average of twenty four percent of the carts being used, it's about sixteen percent of the cart is full. During the summer months, it's actually about the same. It's because of the, again, the cart usage based on the same amount of residents, but it's, it's used more. But the average amount is sixteen percent full. So that's just based on using a conversion of tonnage and the number of users. So we did internally think of some ideas of like, what, what could we do to try and get better usage of our carts? One option would be to go during the winter months, go to a monthly pickup instead of bi-weekly. That would provide us with cost savings. And then for potentially the high users, or but some of the users that have high usage. We could look at maybe offering a discount to the second cart. And then have that as an option, because there are some users out there that probably fill up their carts. It's just, we're saying on the average, it doesn't show that way, based on the survey. Residential recycling dropped about seven percent, so. On average. Residential waste is pretty much flat, increased about two percent. Based on twenty twenty. And then residential recycling, how are we doing? So you can see based on a, on a whole for, for resident, sixty two percent of the waste. Is going into just general waste stream, eleven percent into recycling, and then twenty seven percent of it is organics. Some of our goals for twenty twenty two, obviously continuing with the education. We are looking at trying to introduce at the end of this, we'll show you what's in your bin campaign to help identify. Help residents identify what's in the recycling, what's the difference between recycling and what's the difference between organics? We'd like to try and hopefully get into school programs again to start some awareness. And then continue to expand both the electronics and hazardous waste programs out at the waste transfer site. We'd like to, we did look at last year, starting to do some collaboration with other municipalities in regards to glass recycling. It seems to be a common for, for all municipalities, so we'll continue with that. Community events. Like to, again, go with the annual community green and clean in April. And celebrate the waste reduction week in October. We'll continue with the, the random survey checks in regards to organics to continue to get a handle on how those are doing. And then we, last year, actually introduced the organics collection in the administration office here. We'd like to possibly extend that to a couple more of our facilities, one being the fire department and the other downtown shop. So yeah, this is just an idea that Allison and Ken have come up with in regards to, again, awareness on. How do we increase our organics collection and really identifying the difference between them? So we are looking to introduce a solid waste campaign going through social media, posting it that way. This will be a regular contest, will include some prizes. And really get some community involvement into the program, so. Yeah, good time to finish.
Thank you, Director Kennedy. Question, the, the one slide, Carrie, I don't know if you can move back. Just the increase, I guess, in the overall amount going to the landfill was kind of surprising in twenty 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 one from nineteen and eighteen. I know we spoke last term about, I guess, around education and, you know, people are throwing some fairly large items in the, those bins. Because it's easy to do so, you can throw the computer screen in there, but you can't do that into a garbage bag quite as easy and. Do you get any feedback at all from Three Sixty on? What's coming through in the landfill bins or the, the waste bins?
Um, we don't get much of a summary. We do have in regards to the organics. We, we, we do get updates from them in regards to contaminants and the organics that ends up going into the waste stream. But no, we don't get much of an update in regards to heavy items going into the residential.
It seems like a fairly significant increase from nineteen to twenty one. You know, it's almost thirty five percent.
Yeah.
Do you have any idea like why that's happening or?
I, I think that's one of the reasons that we're doing the surveys, trying to identify where we can better improve these programs.
Sure.
Yeah.
Yeah, I'm also surprised to see the, the lack of usage, I guess, in the summertime and the organics carts. I would have thought those would be full almost every week, because.
It is surprising based on the tonnage.
Yeah.
Put that in a number of ways, because we do get some of that feedback as regards to like my bins overflowing all the time. And yet, I think on the whole, when you look at it on the average, not everybody is like that. So I think we need to look at improving those people that are, that are actually taking advantage of the system.
Yeah, yeah, I think it's a great idea to offer a second cart to people that need it for sure, to reduce rate. Councilor Wing?
Thank you, Mayor Berkeley, and through to Director Kennedy. Just a reflection on twenty twenty one, potentially the impact of having people at home, working from home during the pandemic. Decluttering their houses was a big deal, but then so was landscape. I would like to remind council that we had received a letter. I think it was either right after Christmas, could have been right before, from one of our residents, asking that we have a discussion around our recycle program and our recycle boxes. And so I'd like to revisit that, please. Certainly, the little blue box that sits out in the, in the alley is always filled overflowing. If we want to educate our households and having them do more recycling, our system right now, I don't believe is, is adequate for any more than what we do. Rain, wind, snow, all of it, dogs. That blue box is, is a disaster. So we had talked about potentially going to a bin with a lid.
Yeah, Councilor Wing, so I did do some research and some gathering of information in regards to recycling. And what that would mean to try and bring it into the, to the automated stream. We, we look at, we do have a number of carts that are extra carts, and when we bought, brought the program in, we have a bunch of carts out of the shop. Could we look at reusing those carts potentially? Unfortunately, just the. The difficulty was changing lids out and trying to make reuse those, it wasn't possible. So we are looking at an option to. Potentially get those bought back and reduce rate. So we did do a research in regards to what would it cost to bring it in? Approximately what it would cost to just purchase the recycling carts to be automated would be what, two hundred and twenty-three thousand dollars? That would get us. Every resident supplied plus a, about fifty extra carts. We do have, in twenty nineteen, we started to put money back into the program, into our solid waste program. So we do have a reserve of a hundred and twenty thousand dollars in the reserve. That could potentially go into the purchasing of those carts. As well, just looking through my notes. Yeah, we could look at doing that with the, the rest of the purchased coming out of the general cap reserve as the option. Moving forward and then bringing that in, we did talk to Three Sixty in regards to what that means into the program. It would actually be a wash in regards to the cost. To do it, because it would be a little bit reduced, because we're going to go automated, but we're anticipating that the tonnage would go up. So then our, then tonnage would then be increased, which is then also a cost. So we're calling it a wash to go automated. So it is just that upfront cost of, of two hundred and twenty-three thousand.
Just divvying off of that, I, I, everybody looks at these bins and carts and you see abuses and all that. You, you might get. If you had a bigger. Recycling bin that doesn't blow all over the, which is very common in my neighborhood. You might get more coming out of the. Landfill stream and going over there. But that's a maybe, I'll leave that to somebody else to study. Could you refresh my mind on what the expanded electronics entailed? Like what did that? I should know, but I don't.
What? I don't know either.
Did they, obviously, they were taking all the TVs and the stuff that we all pay a, a fee on when we buy it. But I do know there's always things like phones and microwaves.
The electronic.
That aren't in the recycle program, really, are they now?
Most of it that they added, basically anything with a cord, now you can take down at the, you know, whether it's small appliances, those types of.
So I do think we should include that in our education. Re, re, because I, I should know that, but I didn't remember it that we should. And I think there's a component in the education for E Three Sixty as well for us to help them. You drive by a lot of these bins and they put them right beside each other. There's not that space to walk between them and. Any way we can help them too, I think. So when we start to do education, we should look at every side of it. Thank you.
And Councilor Highstone?
Thanks, Your Worship. I would agree with Councilor Wing's comments on the recycling. As to the numbers, we'll get there, you know, I don't need them right now. I know that that's come up a couple of times just before and after Christmas, but, or the holiday season. And I think the education is key, especially young people. I think the young, like, maybe is something that we do at the schools. Kids really can push their parents in goofy ways and, and make them think differently when they're talking to them. But I, I think the education is key. And I was saying, you know, something, you know, on the organic. And I was saying, you know, something, you know, on the organic side, even like, I know we try to flood everything through, you know, social media and that, even a stupid sticker on your bin that gives you an idea when those days may be in different, you know, months, seasons, and that may remind people as well. But I think we've come a long way since the town used to go around and do it, you know, years ago. So thanks for your report.
Director Kennedy, do you have the information like how much each stream costs, the the tonnage that we pay?
Yeah, so in regards to residential organics, we we pay a disposal fee of sixty dollars a metric ton. And then in regards to recycling, we have a disposal fee of ninety five dollars a metric ton. And then the residential waste is seventy seven dollars metric ton.
Okay, thank you. CEO Becker.
I'm just asking council if there's any other expectations regarding this report or information recycling. Just want to make sure we're meeting your expectations.
Maybe something that comes up during strategic planning, possibly today and tomorrow, right? That maybe this is a priority and sorry, Counselor Wing, I'll let you go ahead.
I just just one final comment, and then yes, I would be pleased to discuss it further over the next two days as we're strategic planning. And that's around being customer focused, I think. And so, you know, does everybody want a big? A big bin? Do that people have the option to have a small bin? Do people have the option to say, I want a big blue recycling bin, but I'll share it with my neighbor and you only. So I just, I wonder how, I know it's very automated and I know the system, in my opinion, works really well. But I wonder if it's if it's adaptable on a more consumer friendly basis. And as we look at doing some other different different things, if it's possible for us to adjust sizes or pick up times that or pick up the numbers of weeks in between that that kind of thing. So it's just something for us to keep in mind, I think, as we discuss further, but the report is very helpful. Thank you.
Yeah, I I know we spoke last term when this first came on that you can chip the bins and so correct that you can, so the household is paying for their usage. So somebody may be taking their waste bin once a month. Where somebody else has it full every week and yeah, but we're all paying the same thing. So so we decided to kind of go this route, of course, I mean, it's expensive to to customize it further. And so it was much more cost friendly. Counselor Dunham.
Mayor Barkley, Director Kennedy, the usage stats are great, but with the inquiries and complaints, did we get any sort of an idea from the community what what their feelings are? Do we have a sort of a general, is it, are people liking what we've done?
Yeah, the the hundred and seventeen, it's mostly comments in regards to the the system. Missed carts dates were either they drove by it, it wasn't placed out in time or wasn't in the right location. A lot of the inquiries are in regards to the placement and not picked up. But I think overall, we've had we've had a much better satisfaction reading.
We had also done a tour last term to Director Jenkins took us out to Stickland Farms where they do the composting. And so it was really great to go out there and and see where the organics are going. We talked at the time about potentially. I think bringing some of that compost back into Innisfail where residents could use it. So maybe that's something we can take a look at again as well. And it was interesting to go out there and and see the scope of that operation. Anyway, if there's nothing else, I'll have somebody please make a motion that tweaks up this report as information. And thank you, Director Kennedy, it was very good to get caught up. I'll make the motion, Mayor Barkley. Okay, thank you, Counselor Maseras, all in favor? Thank you, carried. So next, six point one, I'll ask Manager Shaw to come up to speak to us about the appointment of a development officer.
Good afternoon, Mayor and Council. The first report before you is a request for appointing me as your development or one of your development officers on behalf of the town. This would aid the town from a flexibility standpoint in terms of personnel, making sure that we do have designated development officer available at all times during the week or during particular periods of the the year, late summer and whatnot. So we have to come before you to be able to get that that designation from you. So recommended motion that you have before you is that council appoints Gordon Shaw, the manager of community development services as a development officer in accordance with section two point one, one of section two point zero zero administration of bylaw fourteen seventy being the town of Innisfail's land use bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Manager Shaw. Could I please have someone make that motion?
Excuse me, Mayor Barkley, the motion that council points Gordon Shaw, manager of community development services as development officer in accordance with section two point one, one of section two point zero administration of the town or bylaw one four seven zero being the town of Innisfail's land use bylaw.
Okay, thank you, Counselor Dunham. Any questions? All in favor? You're hired.
Thank you, Mary.
And then six point two, Manager Shaw will speak to us on the new municipal development plan.
Yes, Mayor and Council, administration would like to begin the process of reviewing the municipal development plan. Our MDP stems back from nineteen ninety eight. There was a consolidation done in in two thousand and seven. But in essence, it hasn't changed since that time. So if you think back to nineteen ninety eight, all of the changes that have occurred between then and now, it's about time that we take a look at the at the MDP, because it is a very strategic document for the community. And also the fact that you adopted the IDP, the with the Red Deer County last year. So it's important that our planning framework is is consistent with one another. And like I said before, these types of plans generally are reviewed every five to ten years or sooner, depending upon the amount of growth that that you have. So certainly it is time to be able to to open it up and and take a look at it. And so the process that we would like to to use is to go internally. We believe that we have the capacity and resources available to be able to attempt this internally with the assistance of PCPS, our longtime planning consultant service agency. And to be able to to approach it that way. So the timeline that we're figuring that this will take will probably be between twelve and and twenty four months, probably closer to twenty four months, depending upon the workload that we have over the the next little while. And the type of approach that we want to take is whereby we have an advisory committee to help guide the formulation of the the plan. And so I've attached to this report draft set of terms of reference for that that committee. I suggested that we perhaps look at anywhere between seven to nine community members. Members from council, members from the MPC, members from other organizations and community groups within the the community. And then to be able to begin working on the the MTP over that timeframe that indicated to you before, so.
Thank you, Manager Shaw. Just I guess one comment I have looking at the terms of reference. I would personally like to see the the nine person committee. I think, you know, the more engagement we can have, the better. And I would also like to see two council members on that committee. Yep, we have any say in it. But yeah, I think that would be a good next cue, maybe give us an idea to who other stakeholders would be besides P MPC members from the community organizations.
I would, Mayor and Council, I would suggest like a member from the Chamber of Commerce, a member from the general business community, from social agencies, schools, that type of of widespread approach in order to be able to gather as much community information as possible. One other suggestion I have is that you include a youth member to be able to get that kind of feedback. And to be able to utilize that feedback in the preparation of the of a document.
Yeah, I love, love the idea of the youth member as well. That's excellent. Anyone have any questions? And we have two motions and to to make. I would ask somebody. Oh, I'm sorry.
Just for clarity, Your Worship, just on the terms of reference, so there was, you suggested adjustment to the terms of reference. Just for clarity, do we have that captured, Gordon? So nine members, but replacing. If we could go back.
Yeah, nine members and with two counselors. Two members of town council.
So.
Put that into the second motion, CEO Becker. Because it's asking that we approve the attached terms of reference.
Mayor and Council, I think the most important thing is is that you give us direction in terms of beginning the process of preparing the the MDP document. We may be able to come back to you like with the draft terms of reference a little bit more refined so that you have an idea in terms of the the groups and organizations that you want to to include within that that advisory committee. But certainly, we wanted to be able to get moving on this, even though we've already done some preliminary background work on it. But the most important thing is to get the initiative moving forward, the mechanics of it. We can do another day kind of thing.
So then don't bother with the second.
But sorry for interrupting, Mayor Barkley and manager. Just that the numbers would have to shift, obviously. So would you be going down to two members from the stakeholder community to accommodate your additional council prep? So that's that's where I was going. You can certainly approve the terms of reference, but if you want two council members, where where do you want to make that adjustment? Based on this terms of reference.
I guess. Think what I just heard from Manager Shaw is that we don't bother nailing the terms of reference today, just that we ask or that we move that that we initiate this initiative to 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 develop this and and he'll come back with. And he's heard some of this discussion, which may contribute to the numbers in the terms.
Yeah, there's two motions that are recommended, but we can make the one motion. Is that okay then? And we'll leave the terms of reference for another day. Does that make sense? Counselor Wing.
Mayor Barkley, I would move then that council direct administration to begin the process to prepare a new municipal development plan.
Any further discussion? All in favor? Thank you. Thank you, Manager Shaw.
Okay.
That information. And we'll move on to correspondence and information. I just want to bring to council's attention point number five. So we had a some information on the fifty five plus games a couple of weeks ago, and now we've received another item with the Alberta Games. Speaking with CEO Becker the other day, he feels that maybe the community is not quite large enough to be able to host something like this. But you know, maybe potentially taking a regional approach could be an option. But were you sending this on to the community services standing committee as well?
That's the recommendation.
And just to add, I did request some additional information to understand the the scope and the what facilities would be required to to be able to accommodate that event.
Can you just go back to the the first part of this, Cara, please? Thanks. But you put your hand up, sorry. Number eleven, CEO Becker, like is that? We've never participated in that before.
Not to my knowledge, Mayor Barkley, it's I do know municipalities that have been part of this and have not part of it, so both sides are really up to up to council, if you wish, just to see this as a initiative you'd like to participate with.
I'd also like to bring attention to item number twelve, too, from Gary Stagnus, who would very much like to have some kind of acknowledgement at the new hall report. Recognizing Bob Newman, who was probably the most integral person responsible for getting that hall report going in the first place back in the late nineties with Rotary and is always a strong advocate for the hall report. I know that's been left with Director Jenkins, I believe, so. Right, there's no. Counselor Highstone.
I just, I wanted to agree with the Alberta, the games piece. It could be opportunity working maybe with pen holder, so you know, a community like that. That's what I wanted to state. And as to Bob Newman, I think it's, you know, I think it's worthy of recognition. That's all I have. Thanks.
Thank you. And CEO Becker.
Yeah, you were just based on on this one. So this is something council wishes to to advance for their discussion with with Mr. Stagnus to determine, just to we understand the vision. Bring that back to council for more discussion and perhaps formal direction.
Do you like a motion today, CEO Becker, for us to move that you that administration works with? Mr. Stagnus, are you okay?
I think we're all carrying now. Mayor Barkley will come back, but still initiate from this conversation. We'll we'll initiate some conversation and we'll formalize any direction for you in the near future.
Yeah, great, thank you. Counselor Bates.
Uh, yeah, just on that one, could I suggest that we do, it looks like the Rotary Club was copied with this.
I don't, yeah, I don't know. I picked it up from from Mr. Stagnus.
No, but it kind of looks like he sent it to us and them.
Yeah, anyway, it's like, it's.
Like, I don't see it being a big thing. I totally agree with it, and I think they could help just do it.
Yeah, I think the plan is for him to for him to do it, from what I understand, so. It's my discussion with him.
Mayor Barkley, number one as well is, I believe it's the proclamation request from the EDA. If I'm not mistaken. I'm just looking to see if council wishes to proclaim.
Yes, do you want us to do that now or wait down the road?
It'd be in advance, if you want to do it now or you know, or late.
I would personally rather wait a little bit to wear closer and, you know, it's a very long ways away from from those dates. But yes, thank you, Counselor Harrison, for bringing that forward to us and certainly, and it'd be, it would be great to have some some activities around that, the round that week, along with active and maybe incorporate the chamber into it as well. So could I have a motion, please, to accept correspondence as information?
I'll make that motion.
Thank you. Thank you. Now we'll do council reports, so start with Counselor Bates today.
Okay, so last week it toured the twin arenas and curling rink and the fire hall. Done that before, but I always see something new, particularly this year, I guess, got into a couple of corners of the. Done that before, but I always see something new, particularly this year, I guess, got into a couple of corners of the curling rink that we haven't been in and to see up to date what assets the fire hall has. I had a Mountain View Water Commission meeting of interest, most supplies that they have are stocked for months of potential supply shortages. They've been proactive with that. And they're now looking at some vulnerable parts that they might need to make sure that they're they're ahead of of interest, one of their main six hundred horsepower pump. Those are big. They pulled it after twenty five years of service, and it does look like it's going to need major including perhaps replacement. One of their key personnel is away on a non COVID related sickness, and so they're doing some scrambling because they're not a big organization. And it's in the the management realm. Yeah, and they're starting to work on their business plan for the next few years. And so they will be looking to us, and I'm sure this could be a component of our strategic planning discussion as to forecasting future water needs. And we did get an email, I think it was today or last week, from Joe Mendesberg to the CAO myself, just saying he's going to be contacting us in the next couple of weeks. At the Bowden Engagement. And I did attend the Brownlee Virtual Emerging Emerging Trends of Municipal Law. It was interesting, as always, fiduciary duty, tax powers, using the legal efficiently. A major overall summary of of COVID from when it started to where it is today and including verification to me of of our direction following the province and the lack of constitutional powers that we did everything right. Upcoming, the strategic planning, looking forward to that. And Thursday, I plan to attend the Housing One O One and and the bullying presentation. Thank you.
All right, thank you, and Councilor Heist.
Got a few things I was gonna mention. Garbage Centennial Park. So every day is a gong show. I walk there every morning. It's it's a pigsty and and I don't know if there's any complaints coming to the town office about it. I know that we have the cameras up there. And I don't want to blame certain individuals in the community, but there's a lot of hanging out. I think causing a lot of grief in that area, erratic driving in Centennial Park. And I know that we got the cameras for a reason. I don't know how many times they're used, but I I'd like to, you know, have an update on that sometime. Yeah, I just got. I was gonna, I was asked about the apartment on Forty Eighth Street and Fifty Third. I think there's that old apartment. It's in abandoned on Forty Eighth Street. So I was just wondering if we can get an update, not today. But it's a sometime administrative process. That would be great. It's been abandoned for quite some time and what the potential is for that. And another one that I do want to discuss at administrative review is springtime is going to be coming soon. A lot more people are buying e-bikes. I do have, you know, my concern of, you know, speed and pass and safety for our citizens. So I think e-bikes are cool, but when some of them can go reach speeds of forty five miles an hour and you're on a bike path with kids, I think that's a danger. So those are my updates and looking forward to strategic planning.
Councilor Harrison.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I also attended the Bowden Joint Council Meeting, the Brownlee Law Seminar. And I I will be attending the strategic planning this evening and tomorrow and Housing One O One on Thursday, I believe it is. I do have a question through to Counselor Bates on the volatilities that you mentioned at the Water Commission. Have they identified sort of what those impacts might be to the commission members? You know, you you talk about a six hundred horsepower pump. I like, do they have serviceability plan or anything like that, that Counselor Bates that? And it revolves around strategic planning and how we may have to budget for if we know in three years that we're going to have a pump or something go down. We better start thinking about it because I don't think those things are are cheap and how it affects our our constituents. So a question through. Yeah.
So operationally, I believe that pump is redundant, lead backed up. And I mean, I think I reported a couple of months back when or three months back when I first got on the commission that they are kind of rejuvenated with a an operational supervisor that is looking at the fact that they have a lot of assets and that they don't have enough reserves and they're working on that. Part of that build of of their reserves resulted in the water rates that we that we're having right now. They've, I think they've got a good handle on it all. As we look at our own strategic planning, it would be whatever we have as far as specific piece of equipment that might where our capacity is pretty good, I think, to handle most of that. But no, I'm not worried about what they've done there and how they're positioned. I just, those are the key things they're looking at. And I think they're in the reflection of them getting ahead on their their all their supplies and chemicals and all that kind of stuff is is the fact that they are on it.
Okay, thank you. That's all I had, Mayor Barkley.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Maseras.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. I was at the Boden Engagement last week and Brownlee, excuse me, and I've got the Policing and Safe Communities this week, committee meeting. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilor Dunham.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. On Monday, had the privilege of going to John's Menville, which was was kind of interesting for me, only having lived here four and a half years and seeing those big buildings and the smoke stacks and really wondering what's inside. I was really impressed by the facility. In particular, the the twenty seven hundred degree glass coming out and actually what what it created. I thought that was very fascinating to me. I was also really impressed with their employee satisfaction and the employee buy on buy in on to all the different initiatives they have, in particular, their environmental and sustainability. And also, I was really impressed what they did to protect the planet during COVID. To hear that they didn't have one outbreak in the almost going on two years from within really showed what what they had in place worked. So that was wonderful to see. Attended, obviously, MP meeting last week, then on Tuesday, the Twin Arena Rink and Fire Hall. Once again, Trish provided a lot of insight into the two facilities, the arena and the curling rink. I've only ever been to the arena to in the stands for hockey games. So it was really interesting to see the other amenities that were there and have a better understanding. And it's interesting, though, over the four and a half years I've been here, not knowing that maybe there's some work to do with letting the community know too. I mean, it's like, you know, I I consider myself to be pretty well informed, but yeah, and then the Bowden Engagement, as everyone said, that was great to be able to compare notes between the two organizations of what we've got going on.
Thank you, and Councilor Bing.
Thank you, Mayor Barkley. Yeah, lots of repetitiveness here. I guess the tours just have been very impactful. Thanks again to Trish and then to Gary for a great tour of of the facilities last week. I just think, you know, as a citizen, a longtime citizen of the community, it would be really nice if we could open or host some open houses at some point in time so that community members can see the depth of the facilities that we offer. I as well as understand the culture of state of safety and efficiency that's present in this organization. And I think that once, once COVID is managed and we can, you know, welcome people in to be able to understand that the the equipment and the services, I think that would be really helpful, and I think it would be really interesting. The other thing was, as a longtime member or resident, I remember when lots of these facilities were built and so having a tour and seeing how code and technology has changed over the last thirty to thirty five years is actually quite breathtaking. Yes, John's Menville last week was an incredible opportunity as well. Thanks to Councilor Bates for ensuring that we had the Royal Tour getting up. There were people that this week that were like, you got upstairs. It's like, yes, we did. You know, five decades of work in this community, employing students and multi generational families, lots of newcomers. And so the other, it's a privilege to have Manville, John's Menville in in this field. Also attended the council meeting with Bowdoin Town Council, look forward to meeting with Red Deer County soon. Understanding our similarities, but certainly the challenges and the differences that we have is really important for us, I think, as a strong region. Brownlee LLP Emerging Trends in Municipal Law, that was of the longest Zoom session I've ever been on in my life. Very interesting. Yeah, it was. It was very interesting, and I look forward to participating in those more often. Last Friday, so a day, a day after Brownlee all day on Zoom, then I got to go into another great event on Friday with Parkland Regional Library. They're doing a focus group as they lead to their strategic plan. They had extremely interesting content and format and use of technology for that for that process. It was so, you know, we look forward to continuing to participate there. Also of interest, of course, is the wide range of opinion as to the role of public libraries in our communities and the where the where the range of opinions came from. And also the diversity of thoughts on the role of a regional system for a library. So it was a great, it was a great event. I looked forward to that very much. And yeah, looking forward, of course, to strategic planning. And just as a note, MPC for tomorrow has been canceled. So that's it for this week.
Okay, thank you. So ten government of Alberta, Alberta Provincial Police Service presentation, and I'm looking forward to everyone getting caught up on that in March, and then we can maybe have a more thorough discussion about where we sit as a council on the RCMP versus the APPS. Of course, went to John's Menville, and yes, it was very interesting. I'll give you a fun fact. I I have a friend who worked there, probably when it first opened or close to it. And she told me the other day that they were paying six dollars and sixty cents an hour when the going wage at that time was two dollars an hour. So of course, attracted a lot of people to 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 work there and, you know, good you summer jobs for university students and and whatnot. So also took part in the the arena tour. It's always a good reminder to see the girls' dressing rooms. How small they are. Something needs to be done. Bowdoin Town Council Meeting, I thought was excellent. Look forward to doing that again at some point in this term. And then have Housing One O One for elected officials this Thursday and strap planning this evening and and tomorrow as well. So and sir, anyone open microphone session? Do you want to say anything, sir? No, is there anyone watching on Zoom, Cara, that would like to put their hand up? So anyone watching on Zoom, please put your hand up and and we'll take a question or a comment. I think, okay, all right. And we'll just go through the upcoming events then. We'll just have someone make a motion that we accept the upcoming events as information.
Let's so move, Mayor Barkley, except for information.
Thank you, Councilor Harrison, all in favor. Okay, then I will have a motion to please move in camera.
Mayor Barkley will make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Councilor Dunham, all in favor. Thank you. And we'll take just a five minute break too and.